It is four o'clock and we are in session for this workshop at the time. And we begin with pedestrian and bicycle accommodations for Olympic Drive.
So Mayor, while EA's coming to the podium to talk about this, this is a follow-up to the students that presented to you all under Visitors Forum about the interest in trying to do more with our trail and sidewalk system leading up to the middle school, Tom Daniels as well, as well as the high school. So we wanted to share our plans and how we've adjusted those original plans to accommodate some of the requests from the kids.
All right, good, thank you.
And I think we have some of them here today as well.
Yes.
Thank you all for being here. So as Mr. McDaniel mentioned, we have had an opportunity, we've gone through the design process to include a number of pedestrian and bicycle enhancements across the corridor. We're very excited about the partnership that we have that is not only providing the extension of the infrastructure from the existing terminus of the Olympic Drive down to Loop 534, but also going and kind of backfilling, quite frankly, some sidewalk areas that are next to existing city property along the aquatics complex and along part of Singing Wind Park that will really kind of complete that corridor from a pedestrian standpoint because that hasn't always, it hasn't been that way really in the past. So I'm excited to be able to speak to those and we do have our design engineer on hand as well if we get into those questions. So just wanted to highlight basically this key corridor, I'll try to use the mouse here. Essentially, this is Singing Wind and Olympic and this orange area, this has existing street and some sidewalks on some sides that goes through here. And then basically the terminus of Olympic is at this point and the new roadway and utility infrastructure expansion will extend this way in addition to the 10-foot trail or enhanced sidewalk paving section that will also be throughout this corridor, really completing, again, the pedestrian and bicycle multimodal transportation corridor, connecting these three important schoolways back to our neighborhoods and really also better connecting our other city park assets throughout this corridor. So again, this is kind of that northern section. This is really all completely new infrastructure. Right now, it is an existing right-of-way, but there really, we've got a few utility pipes in the ground, but other than that, it's a major expansion of various pieces of infrastructure. This is more of the existing infrastructure corridor adjacent to Tom Daniels Elementary, mostly a right-way. Again, it does have some sidewalks. We'll talk about the nuances of kind of how some of that sidewalk works right now and how this new enhanced plan will really increase pedestrian accessibility throughout that corridor going forward. So this is the existing intersection of Singing Wind. You can see here, you've got some pedestrian crossing, crosswalk across here. We've got some drainage features here that have required for the sidewalk to come back to this area. You've also got some pedestrian crossing across this way and some pedestrian striping across the existing private driveway. This is actually the private driveway into Tom Daniels Elementary School. But as you can see, you do have sidewalk that is on both sides of the street in this location. Maybe a little bit easier to see. This is again facing south, southeast at that intersection, basically standing on Olympic and looking towards Singing Wind and that existing stop sign right there. Again, you can kind of see that sidewalk coming from the east and moving up that corridor. This is the softball field just kind of there on the left-hand side of your screen. That sidewalk continues up past the aquatics complex. So again, this is throughout this corridor next to Tom Daniels. I want to speak to this area which kind of gets into the driveway area of the aquatics complex, which is where we start to lose our sidewalk accessibility. Basically, on the eastern side of Olympic Drive, the terminus of the existing sidewalk is here at the driveway into the aquatics complex. You can see it, it's kind of highlighted there. And we've got kind of a goofy ramp situation, basically ramps out into the street. It's not ideal. Also, this entire section there, the area between the two driveways, there is no sidewalk. So what we've done, we had designed essentially a bubble-out situation where it comes out into existing right-of-way and that sidewalk will then have the appropriate ramps which will better allow for pedestrian and bicycle traffic to be able to cross over here. This will be new sidewalk installation and will essentially kind of bracket up so that those tree wells are protected in that area because there is pretty steep topography and we certainly don't want to lose those trees if we can prevent it.
So the sidewalk's actually going out to where the existing street is now?
It will go out and what we've talked about, what will be basically creating a little bit of a roadway diet in there. It's a pretty wide road and so in this section of the corridor will be, we do get a lot of on-street parking also that utilize both the softball field, the aquatics complex. We host a lot of events out there where we do get on-street parking and so essentially we'll be creating more of a formalized on-street parking situation and a roadway diet also to help slow this traffic down. Again, remember this will be basically a 24/7, well, the entirety of this corridor will be a school zone.
Is it similar to what happened on Earl Garrett with the parking striped?
Similar.
In the angled-in parking?
Yeah, just the difference there that's angled in and this is really kind of more parallel.
So when you say it will be, it will be a school zone, it'll be a school zone from one end to the other?
That's correct.
And that'll be during, in the mornings and in the afternoon?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those typical, you know, entry and exit hours, correct. So again, you can see throughout this corridor, we do have some topographic challenges as it's moving kind of off of our city property. This is the pool property back here and then you're starting to get into more of the Singing Wind Park property here. But again, a lack of sidewalk really on the entire eastern boundary of this right-of-way and again, that little island kind of right there in between the two driveways. So that will have, both of these will have the installation of sidewalks as part of this plan. And again, I didn't talk about it earlier, but the hope is that we're minimizing the times that we have pedestrians, particularly students, having to cross the street. And so, you know, you may have folks that are coming from the east and coming down Singing Wind, it's less than ideal for them to have to cross at that intersection, come up, cross again, go down a certain stretch and then cross again towards the school. So not to say that they won't have to cross at some point, but the more we can minimize that, the more safe of a situation that we have. So by having that sidewalk connect along the entirety of that eastern boundary of the right-of-way, again, it minimizes the times that a student or other pedestrian would have to cross the road. And that's, that's a good thing.
Can you go back to the previous slide real quick?
Sure.
So I'm still getting my head wrapped around this hop-out sections and we're doing that to, rather than just continuing the sidewalk up to where we'd normally be, why are we doing that?
Yeah, we've got, so we've got some challenges with the trees. So essentially, if we were to put that sidewalk in here right now, we would take all of these trees out and we would have a very significant slope right there that, you know, you'd have quite an edge and we've got some ramp issues that would go across there. So for kind of dual purpose of being able to save those trees, minimize the tree well and the construction cost of having to create those tree wells and then also create kind of that roadway diet throughout that area, we decided to pop that out a little bit into that existing pretty wide right-of-way situation. So again, that area in blue is really the area that I was speaking of that does not have an existing sidewalk. I'll show you just in advance here. You can see there is an existing sidewalk as you get up the hill, there's actually a mid-block crosswalk right now. You have sidewalk on the western boundary, you don't really have it on the eastern boundary until you get to the top of the hill and I suspect that there was not sidewalk installed on that other side because you do have some significant slope and topographic challenges really along those residential properties north of San Jacinto up to that terminus point along all those older residential homes, there was not sidewalk installed. So essentially, this will, again, it will connect and really fill in the gaps for sidewalk that was not placed that will connect these two areas again so folks aren't having to cross that roadway or cross it less than they would have otherwise. This is just a picture again of looking south towards Singing Wind, kind of from the top or the middle of the hill, just kind of showing the existing situation of that pedestrian crossing.
So how wide is the sidewalk on the east, the one on the left here?
These are all basically four-foot sidewalks, I think, right now, existing on both sides.
Okay.
So and that will basically continue that throughout this corridor. We will be, I'll speak to in a minute, but we'll be picking up a larger section as we get a little bit closer. Again, you can see this continues to look south, you've got that sidewalk section, you can begin to see over on that western side, existing residential, we've got challenges with any sidewalks really being installed on that side due to mailboxes, a lot of driveways, pretty steep driveways, as well as just that general slope right there. Be pretty tough from a construction standpoint in addition to, you know, it's a little bit of a tough right-of-way situation over on that side.
So you're saying that it's going to keep, it's going to be at one side that, okay.
That's correct. As it comes up to that cross point right there, it will, pedestrian traffic will need to, from that side, if they're coming up, they will need to cross. That's correct.
Is this street wider than most?
Yeah, the new walk is six feet in that section.
Okay.
Sorry, what was your question?
Just the street itself looks a little wider than some of our other residential streets. Is it just the picture, the photograph itself makes it look?
The right-of-way through here, it is a more wide street section.
Okay, well, that's good.
We've actually got a fair amount of room to kind of play with. So this is the existing terminus of Olympic Drive and again, you can kind of see the hill sort of going back down. It's really the apex of the hill. You're then moving down and to the right or to the east where it will connect with the intersection that's in front of the Tybee High School. So if you can imagine it, that terminus point is on the left-hand side of the screen and this is basically the design feature of the roadway as it's beginning to go down the hill. On the bottom portion of that, which would essentially, if you were looking at it this way, it would be on the right-hand side, basically where this sidewalk ends, it will pick up across here and this is where the 10-foot section of trail or multi-use path or enhanced sidewalk will pick up and will go, begin to go down along, basically along the edge of that roadway. This is the section more directly adjacent to the proposed middle school site and you can see on the left-hand side, this is where we have proposed a crossing location in working with KISD. They wanted those students to basically be able to cross over and be, they'll still be in the right-of-way, but they'll be on school property as quickly as possible rather than having them go further towards the intersection. And we also felt like from a visibility standpoint and from an exit standpoint, this is a driveway that will probably receive less traffic than the other driveways and so we all agreed that this was the...
Is that an island?
It is. There's a pedestrian island there which will also provide a little bit of refuge for pedestrians in that area.
Oh, right here.
Of Longshane?
Yeah. So this is heading a little bit further east. This is the existing intersection, basically three-way intersection at Tybee High School. Various improvements here that are proposed. As you can see, let me flip back here real quick. If you can see right here, there is no sidewalk area kind of going out into the intersection that basically terminates on this side of what would be the private drive. So sidewalk will be expanded out into the crossing area and then we'll provide crossing across here to get to that 10-foot enhanced path. And you can see this is then going alongside the proposed middle school site. This is some of the standard signage certainly that we install or that is installed with new roadways. It's your typical, you know, pedestrian and, you know, yield to pedestrians, school zones, you know, speed limit enforcement type signage, you know, based off of some of the recommendations that we heard from these fantastic students. We've also looked at some additional enhancements that we'd like to explore in this area. Again, we really don't, we have not done a lot of what we'll call the enhanced paths. Certainly, we've done sections of trail. Those sections of trail really don't interact ever with vehicles and they're, you know, and they're a little bit different corridor-type use. And so we're really intending for this section of enhanced path to have a little bit different feel and certainly it's interacting with roadway and with motor traffic in a different way. And so, you know, some of the, some of the items that we heard and the concerns that we heard were about, you know, bicyclists and pedestrians and how that interplays and how that intermixes. And so we certainly, from a signage standpoint, want to help remind and educate folks and, you know, young riders and young walkers about yielding to pedestrians and that is a shared path, you know, staying to the right, passing on the left. We think adding potentially some striped elements kind of down the middle will help remind some folks about that and generally just being courteous on this trail or enhanced pathway.
We could use a couple of those on the River Trail.
We may need, you know, if it works well, we may add some on there. Yeah, absolutely.
You know, just start the...
Just friendly reminders, right?
Right.
Yeah, especially walk right.
Yes.
The bikes and the walking.
Yes, absolutely. So we happen to answer any questions you may have on what we have designed thus far.
Did you have a feel for, sorry, Mayor?
That's right.
How many would walk versus how many would ride their bike or what kind of mix of use would we have on the sidewalks?
You know, I think we're encouraged to see. You know, it'll be interesting to see. I mean, certainly as you progress that direction, you know, you've got the middle school and then the high school and so, you know, that sometimes can have a different interplay than what an elementary school has. And, you know, I think the other thing to remember is that we have a large greenfield area around this intersection or this whole corridor really. And so, you know, you, while we're all thinking, okay, traffic kind of going that way towards the middle school, the reality is we may have housing and other elements that go in here in the near term that we have a flow of elementary age kids that are going the opposite direction.
That's true, the Tom Daniels.
And so, you know, those are all going to be dynamics that are going to play out over time and will evolve and adapt over time to accommodate those.
Good. So if that happened, a sidewalk on the other side could happen then?
It could potentially. You know, what we discussed in, you know, the initial parts of the conversation with the school district were, you know, is it, did, do you feel like it's more advantageous and beneficial for students to have a five-foot sidewalk basically on both sides or would the preference be for a 10-foot sidewalk to mainly be on one side? And so with the funding that we had allowable within this project and, you know, the, what we know is going on the ground in the near term, which is the middle school, we went with that 10-foot enhanced path across there. But certainly, there could be in the future additional sidewalk that was installed.
Housing went in over there.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So when the 10-foot sidewalk terminates, it terminates into a four-foot sidewalk?
So we will transition in this zone back to the existing sidewalk that is in this location. This actually may be a little bit wider than four feet.
Five and a half, six.
Yeah, this is a six-foot location here adjacent to the existing Singing Wind Park.
Is that, is that wide?
Six feet, I believe.
Okay, so it goes from 10-foot to six feet to four feet?
Now, again, the four-foot section is more towards Singing Wind and it actually has sidewalk on both sides.
Sorry, Kim.
No, no, I was, I was...
Here, go ahead.
So do I have it right, when the new walk path ends, it's going to transfer over to the sidewalk on the other side? Am I seeing that correctly?
I'm sorry.
Or does the sidewalk remain on the same side of the street? Is it going to be a crossover?
What are we talking about, in this new section? So it will, this transition area in this location will transition right here on the right-hand side of your screen from that six-foot walk over to that 10-foot enhanced walk and it will carry along that entirety of that side, basically until you get to this pedestrian refuge point where you can then cross over to the middle school site and then that will carry on on the middle school site all the way down to the intersection of Tybee High School.
And that's 10-foot also?
Correct, through the entirety of that section. That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Hoppy?
The speed limit, other than during school time, will be 30, 35?
I believe that's 30, is that right, Kyle?
I would hope it wouldn't be any more than that, okay.
That's our standard residential speed limit.
I know all about that now. I've been warned.
Okay, I'd like to, you have something?
I was just going to, since the kids are here, I just want to ask them if they had any questions and I wanted to thank you for coming to council in December to recommend some options that are now going to be part of a plan that weren't going to be there before. So I think that's really cool and I hope that you know that as a citizen, whether you're a child or a grown-up, that you can come to a place and talk to some people and then you can see some changes. So I'm proud of you and then do any of you want to ask any questions about what you saw or say anything about what you saw?
Your comments on it?
Yeah.
You wear helmets, right?
While Mrs. Mitchell is encouraging them, I would like to say to the students, when you look at what Mr. Hoppy's just presented, the thought that goes into something like this, for the children, for those who are walking, those who are going to be on their bikes, for the neighbors and the impact on their property and so forth is so big and the thought that goes into all the planning. And a very key person in this is an engineer. Would the engineer like to raise his hand? There you go. Who has worked on this, looked at all the possibilities, come up with the drawings and everything else. And then the other thing, and Mr. Hoppy referred to this, you have to also look at the future. If there are a lot of homes built in that area, and we've got 32 acres where there will be homes built right across from the middle school, then you're going to have a lot of traffic coming back this way to go to Tom Daniels. So all of that needs to be considered. Now, I'm going to go back, see if anybody has a question or comment, but I want to say one more thing. Did you know that Mrs. Mitchell is a very, very good teacher and other teachers have talked to me about how good she is? So there you go.
It's true.
Okay. And now, two of these students belong to you?
Well, I do have two students. One belongs to the robotics team.
Okay.
So I'm also a proud parent, that's right.
All right, all right. We have one little sister, I think. Yeah. Okay. Anything on this, further on this? Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to address this with us and giving the children an opportunity to see how it works.
Yeah.
And thanks to engineers for all of the engineering.
Good, good.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Engineers make the world go around, I'll tell you. Okay. Now we move to the Quarterly Community Improvement Project Report.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Do your homework. I had to say that.
They can never hear it too much. Especially when it's not from their parents.
I have one already. Yeah, there you go. Get your magnifying glass out.
Called low-maintenance child.
Okay, Ms. Hoppy, you want to jump into it?
Sure. So before you, you've got our monthly CIB project status update. We've got 28 different projects that are going on out there, a lot of work happening. I'm not going to hit on everyone, certainly can answer questions should you have it, but I do want to highlight just a few. Parking garage enhancements in the downtown Water Street Streetscape project. That project is out to bid right now. Right now, we anticipate those bids being due in the early part of February, February 4th or 5th, I believe. And so hopefully we'll get good bids and we'll be able to bring that for project award towards the end of February, I believe, February 25th meeting. Same with Clock Tower Elevator, actually just did a pre-bid meeting today. Seemed like we had good interest from contractors, local contractors on that. So again, same timeframe on that one and essentially that project is slated to be the encasing in a number of different ways of the infrastructure that is exposed on the clock tower right now and hopefully that will add functionality to that and help us a little bit and prevent dust and rain and other things that can kind of gum up features there and we won't have that going down as frequently as we have had in the past. Legion Lift Station continues to move on track. We're basically just waiting for some pumps to, infrastructure to make it through customs. We understand that it's kind of sitting on the dock right now. As it gets through that, it should be here and can get installed and we're hoping for that to be up and running here in the next couple of months and going through those testing procedures. Same thing really with the TTHM project and installing those granular activated carbon filter systems. We've done most of the onsite work that can be done at this point, but those JAC filters are being produced offsite and manufactured and then will be shipped to us. And so we anticipate those being installed in the late March, early April timeframe. So it should be good as we're ramping up into the summer season, certainly when we have higher water demand.
And that's number 17?
That is actually number 18.
18, okay.
Yeah, we're basically wrapped up with the Clarifier project, which was at the water treatment plant, but really a different project. We're basically just doing punch list items on that one right now. The request for proposals for public-private workforce housing at Loop 534, again, we just kind of touched on that one a minute ago, the due date for that was extended based off of feedback that we had received over holiday timeframe, just tough for folks to kind of get those ramped up and polished up going into the holidays. So extended it out into the end of January. Hopefully, those should be coming in at the end of this week and then we will begin to evaluate those and go through the process of figuring out a partnership there as we proceed. But so far, good interest on that, on that project. Number 21, River Trail Extension to Shriner University, that continues to progress in a timely fashion. We've knocked out several sections of concrete pore already and so far, no hiccups. So knock on wood, we'll keep, if we can have good weather, we'll continue to move along on that one, hoping to have that fully constructed by the April timeframe and be able to open as we...
They still think they're on time?
Right now, you know, we keep having these kind of storms kind of blow through, but thus far, they haven't been too detrimental as far as the process. They've been able to kind of work around those. They have shifted concrete pores to some of the sections that are over at Shriner and so they're a little bit more accessible in muddier conditions and so they're kind of working around the weather. But, you know, we, for the most part, we've had a pretty fair weather winter, so we hope that that will continue.
Looks good. What I seen of it, it looks really good.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Excited about that one. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
The tennis center's coming along well?
It is, it is. We are wrapping that up. We anticipate that really by end of February timeframe, we should have that pretty much wrapped up.
Saw it the other day, it's looking pretty good.
It is, it is. We're excited about it.
Yeah. Would you say a word about the importance of the Legion Lift Station related to development in that area?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, again, that project, it was really, really serves that entire southeastern quadrant of the community and actually quite a bit of, you know, it all flows downhill, right? So quite a bit of really kind of all of the area south of downtown going towards Loop 534. And so but for enhancements to that lift station, we would not be able to have... 534, and so but four enhancements to that lift station, we would not be able to have development within that corridor. We were essentially at capacity. And so this was not a repair of that infrastructure, this was a complete replacement of that Legion Lift Station, which was actually another location across the, across the loop, and not just of the existing capacity. Obviously, it was a major enhancement where we were adding a lot of capacity to be able to serve growth in that corridor well into the future, which was a big reason for the Economic Improvement Corporation contributing partially to that project.
Right, right. Good, good.
And the Arcada, still, we're still looking at July fourth?
July third, I believe.
July third, that's right.
So we understand they're still on crunch, on schedule on there, and I know that construction has been ensuing over there, and as far as we know, it's all going smoothly, so.
And on Kevin Bernhardt's website, you can see pictures that really are interesting, you know, of the progress.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Who else do we have?
That's it, Mr. Mayor. You have an executive session?
Yeah. I saw Stuart come up here, and I thought he was primed and ready. Could I hear a motion? Do we go into executive session on Personnel Officers 551-076? Is that adequate?
I'll make the...
Wait just a second. No?
Yeah, well, you want to do it under 551-074, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. I'd circled it wrong. So 551-074.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session under this session for 551.074. We're going to an appointment of judges.
All right. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, I want to say aye.
Aye.
Okay.